Hey everybody, I'm Dr. Singleton and we are ready for the second half of our candidates debate. We will now bring in the town council candidates. And it's all yours Lori.
Okay, thank you. And welcome again to our listening audience as we continue the forum with the town council candidates. There are two positions open and there are three candidates running for the position. We have with us this evening the incumbent Sandra Wenzel, Jay Farman to my left, and the third candidate Shannon Thiel is unable to be here with us this evening. Mr. Thiel is on fire overhead duty in the Grants Pass area and will return to Lakeview Friday. Due to his work day, he is unable to dial in to the forum. So in speaking with Shannon last night, he indicated that he would be available beginning next week for you to contact him personally regarding his positions on any of the questions that are asked tonight or other concerns. So since all of our candidates are not on the same stage, let us reiterate the guidelines for you. And the virus has made it so that we have had to do this in two sections instead of one big forum. So we appreciate people staying with us. So the format is for each candidate to be given a two-minute introduction followed by one-minute responses to the questions. Our timer is Deb Watts. The questions will focus on five areas: the structure of the town council, financial situations, ordinances, ethics, and citizen concerns. And I want to thank you both personally and on behalf of that committee for your desire to serve our community. So let us begin. And so Sandy, if we could hear your opening remarks first.
Thank you Lori, and I want to thank you for having this forum and also your committee that helped you with it. My name is Sandra Wenzel. I have lived in Lakeview for almost 50 years and have worked here, raised my family here, and retired here except for my duties on the town council. I worked in the past in social services in the district attorney's office and for adult probation and parole. I've been on the council for a number of years and think I have a good working relationship with the town charter and the council rules and have really enjoyed being a part of the progress that Lakeview is now making in a lot of ways and hope that I will be able to continue to work towards those goals. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now Jay Farman.
Hi, Mrs. CROKER. Thank you for having me. I'll just give you a brief description here. I was born in 1951 in Toledo, Oregon. Went through 12 grades in Woodburn, Oregon. A multicultural community. The classrooms there were like 30% Hispanic, 30% old believer Russian, and 30% Anglo. So I did get a pretty good workout for being in a multicultural community. I participated in three sports there and worked to earn my own money in the berry fields. After high school graduation, I attended Western Oregon College and graduated in 1975 with a bachelor in science degree in education. And my first teaching job was back in Woodburn. And I worked summers teaching science and math for Marion County ESD Educational Service District. My introduction to Lakeview and Lake County was in 1974 when I married Cece DuVall. In the following years, we visited during holidays and summers and I grew to love this area and the people here. In 1990, I had the opportunity to teach in one of eight one-room schoolhouses in Oregon, and that was Plush Elementary. I had grades one through six and I had six students. So that was kind of fun. While there, I started a preschool and Cece helped me with that. It was an experience and education for not only me but also my family. The next year, I moved to Lakeview system and taught sixth grade math and science at Daly Middle School. I finished the last years of my career back at AD Hay. And throughout the years, I coached different middle school and high school sports including football, basketball, and track teams. In my retirement from about 2010 on, I've continued my volunteer work throughout the community, organizing and managing the KC Burger Stand every year, serving as financial secretary for the Knights of Columbus. I've been a member of the Elks Club 1236 in Salem and Lakeview for 42 years and organized and cooked for and served a variety of luncheons and dinners to include the veterans dinner which is coming up November 7th. I did the library endowment dinners, Rocky Mountain Elks Club, and Oregon Hunters Association. And through doing those, I just wanted to mention that we made over $50,000 for the FFA for our school. So that was quite a bit. At this point in my life, I want to be more involved in the community. Serving on town council would be a great place to start. I am familiar with the town parks as I did park maintenance for several summers. And I understand the budget process. I don't have any real agenda in mind. I just desire to work for the town council and see Lakeview grow to its full potential.
Thank you. That is so great. All right, we're going to start Sandy. We know what the mayor's role in a way is in Lakeview, but you've had the rare experience of being in that situation and serving as mayor. So I think you'll have time, you'll probably address this later. But for right now, why does the town council have a president? And how is the president chosen? And what are the president's responsibilities?
The council president is chosen from the four counselors who are on, have been elected. Their primary job is to sit in for the mayor running the town council meetings when the mayor is not available. And so he is chosen by the council usually on the first meeting of the new year. The council chooses and votes for that person.
Good. And you've had that rare opportunity of serving in both positions. So we'll get to some more questions regarding that later. Jay, why are you running for town council? You just said that it's because you want to serve the community or what?
Yeah, I just think I'm qualified for the town council as a retired educator and a former business owner. I own McNary Golf Course in Salem and helped start several businesses. I think I understand how the budget process. I negotiated contracts for the Oregon Education Association and Teachers Union for 15 years. I think I'm a good listener. I keep an open mind. I really try to get people to work as a team instead of just for their personal agendas for the common good of our community. And I have time right now to devote to the job Lori because I'm retired.
Thank you. Sandy, previously, town council meetings were held in the evenings. Currently, the meetings are held at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. In your opinion, is that the most effective time for our community?
Yes, in one word. It is. But we have experimented over the past several years with having meetings at 7 o'clock and have done that when we were having a meeting, a special meeting in which there was a great deal of public interest and people could come. However, in a normal meeting, there was not any more people there than there was at 4 o'clock. Sometimes none and sometimes just, you know, a number of them. But I think the main thing for people to do is to watch our agenda and if there's something on the agenda that interests them, please come to the meeting and voice your opinions because we really need that.
Thank you. You mentioned your volunteer experiences and everything. Do you have anything you want to add to that at this time?
Well, I just stay active in like the KCs. We donate probably about $10,000 a year that a lot of people don't know. Women's Crisis Center gets some, Lakeview Little League always gets some, and it gets handed out to needy families which we have in Lakeview. Last year at Christmas time, we made a lot of food baskets and those kind of things. So Lori, yeah.
Thank you. Sandy, what is the criteria for calling a special meeting of the town council? Who can call a special meeting? And is a quorum always needed?
A quorum is always needed if you intend to vote on something. A special meeting can be called at the request of two counselors that have something they really feel needs to be discussed by the council. Or the town manager can call a special meeting. And there is no criteria as to what is on the agenda.
Thanks. Jay, how many town council meetings have you attended?
I want to say probably five or six, but I've watched them online and I do try to get the minutes. One thing I thought Mayor Turner did well was for a while, he was in the Lakeview minutes, I believe it was, and he would go on once a week and it would be on the chamber council thing. And I think he stopped that, but I would really like to see Ray or whoever the mayor get out and do that to have more transparency there. So people know what's going on.
Thanks.
That works good.
Sandy, how would you define a conflict of interest? And can you give an example?
Well, a conflict of interest is, I guess, not being honest about your position on something when you have another agenda in mind. That's not a very good explanation, but you caught me off guard there.
Yes.
Anyway, but I think that it would mean also if you are voting on something and that vote could be beneficial to you financially or any other way, that type of situation.
Right. What did you do to prepare yourself for town council then? Should you be elected?
To prepare? Well, I was just talking to Sandy and she recommended that I go down and read the town charters and those kind of things, which I'm going to do. I think that's very beneficial to do that. And, you know, as I put up signs around this year, I had people come out to me and say, "How come people are going so fast down this street? It's, you know, it's 25 miles and they're going 50." So I think we have a lot of ordinances and a lot of things that we don't need anymore. We just need to enforce the ones we have.
Thank you. If the mayor is the tiebreaker Sandy, and the mayor has a conflict of interest, who breaks that tie?
Well, I have a conflict with that question because I am not sure after reading the town charter that the mayor can only vote when he's breaking a tie. So I think that is something the council needs to discuss further down the line.
So what you're saying is that you think it really says that he should be a voting member all the time?
The charter says.
The charter says that. Okay. Hey, thanks. If elected, Jay, what do you hope to accomplish in your first year?
I wrote down some things that I think is important in the next years to come. Let's see, to make people more employable. You know, and it comes down to, you know, the people I talk to, gee, they can't pass a drug test. So is there a drug problem here? Yeah, I think there is with some people that are trying to get jobs. Rising crime rates, kind of keep an eye on that. Affordable housing, you know, is something we need to keep working on, enforcing ordinances. And one of my pet peeves is a clean water in Lakeview. I might bring that up at every meeting if I so get a chance. To keep the sound educational system, access to good healthcare. Those are all things we have now and I'd like to keep those going in the next years to come.
Good. Thank you. And another question, previously, the town council meetings were held in the evenings. And this is the one that Sandy just answered. Currently, the meetings are held at 4 o'clock. In your opinion, is that the most effective time for our community?
I think just like Sandy said, if people read the agenda and show up when they have concerns. The town council meetings that I've been to, like when they were talking about getting rid of the deer, people are pretty passionate about that. You've got to eat flowers and everything and, you know, they don't want them killed. They want them moved out. They come back. So I just think that you have to stay abreast of those things and keep up on it.
And how would you define a conflict of interest? And can you give an example?
To me, a conflict of interest would be if I personally would benefit monetarily from, for some decision that I made. If I owned a house and I pushed it through without permits or something like that and benefited and annexed it into the city, you know, used my position to do that, then I think that would be an ethics violation. You could get in trouble for that. So that's my interpretation of it. I'm sure there's more. You know, if you read the ethical educator at school, it's five pages long. And the good old boy ethics of the 50s, 60s, and 70s and 80s and what you say to people has changed immensely. And that's one of the things we all have to change with.
Thank you. And Sandy, who or what determines whether a council member has a conflict of interest?
Well, I think the council can or anyone can, I guess, register a complaint with us if they feel a counselor has an ulterior motive in voting for something or promoting something. And we would hope that they would if that was the case.
Good. Thank you. Jay, who or what do you think should determine whether a council member has a conflict of interest?
I would think that, well, the president should know. And Michelle Perry is on the, well, she's head of the town, right?
She's in town.
And she keeps pretty good track of those ethical things. You know, and certainly Sandy's been on the board for a long time and I'm sure she has a good feeling of what's ethical and what's not. You could certainly ask somebody, you know, so.
Thanks. Sandy, each council member serves as liaison to several different community groups or organizations. How do you determine which counselor is assigned to each group or organization? And do the assignments rotate?
We usually decide that, and in our charter, it says that we need to decide that during the first meeting of each year. They do rotate and sometimes people get interested in a certain committee that they're working on and want to continue working there. And we do allow that because it's good to not be always into something new and having to catch up with others. And what was the other part of the question?
How do you determine which counselor is assigned to each group or organization?
It says that the mayor should appoint committee members. However, we kind of do it as a council with just discussion at a meeting.
Thank you. So currently, what are your liaison assignments?
Well, yeah, there are kind of few and far we're doing right now because of the COVID. I haven't had any meetings. But I'm on, I've been on the air quality committee for quite a while and I do enjoy that because we've been working, you know, to get clean air here and now keep clean air now that we do meet the federal requirements. And I'm on the PACT, which is a prison advisory committee. And the Lipsync, which is the, if I can say the whole thing, Lake County, it has to do with meeting with law enforcement and problems that might be coming up with their agencies. And I know there's one other one and I'm trying to think of what it is. Those are my three main ones at the present time.
Thank you. Jay, to what committees would you like to be assigned?
I would just love to be on the school board committee. That would be kind of fun. You know, I could work with.
You need to vote for that, be on their vote.
No, no, not be on the school board. Just be a liaison to the school. That would be a good one. And then certainly working with Mr. Marshall on the clean water situation. I would love to do that. Let's see, what else? I'm sure that if I get elected, I'll probably get some, something that a lot of people don't want to do.
But you will do it cheerfully.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Sandy, do you believe all department heads, for example, maintenance, 9/11, law enforcement, somewhere, do you believe these department heads should attend all town meetings and if not, why?
I think that it's important for them to be there the first one of the month because they are required to give a report. And if any of the council members or the audience has questions, they can ask it. But I do not feel it's necessary for them to be at every meeting, no. Because whatever their departments are may not be anything that we are discussing on the agenda. And they can well be doing their own jobs during that time.
Thanks. Jay, the same question. Do you believe that all the department heads should attend all town meetings and if not, why not?
You mean like Mike Taylor, the sheriff?
Right.
If they're on the agenda and they get pre notified, like Sandra said, I think that's what should be done.
Thanks. Now, Jay, if elected to town council, how will you prioritize the obligations of a council member versus your other commitments?
I might start with the things like the Lake County Community Partnership and talk to the people over there. They have a real good idea of how to get agenda items like keeping the storefronts open in downtown Lakeview and new businesses and tourism for sure. So I might reach out to some of those committees and meet with them.
Okay, thank you. Sandy, what are the liabilities, if any, for a town council member? What are the liabilities that you might have?
Well, I guess it's the same as any other citizen. Obey the laws and be ethical in doing your job. Or you, you know, people will discover that you are not doing things correctly.
Yeah. Any other? Well, how many hours a week did you devote to the position of mayor when you were doing that, that position? And how many out-of-town meetings did you feel that you should attend as mayor?
Well, I was not mayor for a very long time.
Would you like to tell the audience how long?
I'm trying to think. It was probably six months.
Six months.
Six to seven months. I did not attend any out-of-town meetings. I did spend a lot more time because we were in between town managers and so I was also kind of acting as the town manager during that time. So I was in the town hall at least every day for a period of time. And I really couldn't tell you how many hours that was, but a few hours a day, I would say five days a week. Besides attending meetings.
Right. And having served both in that capacity for about six months and then as your town council member, what is the workload difference that you see between these two positions of mayor and town council member?
Well, their job descriptions are pretty different for one thing. And the mayor really is in and out of the office quite a bit and in contact with the town manager, keeping up with everything. I think that's primarily the difference. And we, you know, are all able to go and visit with her if we want to. But I know the mayor is in there every day, keeping track of what is going on and doing probably more things out in the community than some of the council members.
Good. Thank you. Now I'd like to turn to the financial area, some questions regarding that. Having been a town council member and everything, what is your position on hiring a qualified financial manager? That's in addition to the town manager or in place of the town manager. A qualified financial manager. What is your position on that?
Well, a qualified financial manager is an excellent position to have filled, but I do not think they should replace the town manager. And it's, there probably would be other jobs associated with that as far as being financial manager. But it's something we've done both ways and I prefer to have a financial manager at least full or part-time.
Thank you. The same question. Jay, how do you feel if you were elected about, what's your opinion on hiring a qualified financial manager?
Yeah, well, I've worked with financial managers before and I think some of them are great and other ones, you know, I don't know if Lakeview needs one. It might be at a cost. I don't know what it would cost to have one. I think Sandra's right with that. I'd have to be on the job for a while and see what the needs are of Lakeview, Lake County, Lakeview before I made a decision on that. I'm sure we could, you know, do it as a team too. I mean, I'd have to do some planning on that one.
Okay. Sandy, are you satisfied that the town's finances are managed professionally at the present time? How often is a financial report generated? Is it monthly or quarterly?
It's quarter, it's, I am satisfied that it is good at the present time. We do get financial reports quarterly or we can always go in and ask for a report on someone's budget or a, something that is money being spent someplace. We do get updates on that.
As a council member, do you see and have an opportunity to review and question each report?
Yes, we do see them. And if you have questions, you can ask.
And how has the budget developed and how involved have you been in the budgeting process?
Well, it is the manager's responsibility to present a budget to the council and we have also a budget committee that meets with the, we have, I think there's four members besides all of the council members. And they go through the budget line by line and ask questions. We change a few things that we like, that we didn't like, or we want to change it to something else. And then the whole committee votes on the budget.
Are you able to tell us more about an ongoing financial investigation of the town of Lakeview? Like what is the status of the investigation report? Who is doing the investigation? What town official is the liaison contact person for the investigation? And what funds are paying for the investigation? None at this time. Okay, thank you. And what percentage of the marijuana and lodging taxes comes back to the town? And how does the town allocate the marijuana tax? I know that 70% of the lodging tax is dedicated to tourism, but to what is the other 30% allocated?
The other 30% of the marijuana?
Right.
Tax goes in?
The lodging tax.
The lodging tax goes into the general fund.
Okay, it goes in the general fund. And then how does the town allocate the marijuana tax?
It goes into the general fund also.
Okay. Do you know what percentage of sales or anything like that that?
I, well, no, it's in the budget and I think we just got a printout on the last displayed page was quarterly. But I don't remember how much that is. It's a nice sum every year.
Thank you. Jay, back to the same question that Sandy had, are you or have you been to enough meetings or viewed meetings to be satisfied that the town's finances are managed professionally at the present time?
Yeah, I think they are. I know as far as the marijuana tax, I was kind of interested in that when it first started. And the state of Oregon gets $85 million off all the marijuana that they sell. Out of that, 34 million goes to education. 34 or 35 million go back into the health resources, the OHA, Oregon Health Authority. Out of that, $34 million that goes to the educational budget. I thought that was going to be on top of our regular budget, but Mrs. Kate Brown put that into the budget on the bottom and so we built up from that. So, you know, I think about 10,000 goes to Lakeview.
May I add something?
Sure.
We only get monies from sale of marijuana within Lakeview.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. Well, I know that some comes back from the state. Oh, okay. I didn't know that. Well, I know that some comes back from the state.
Yeah, a small amount.
A small amount, yeah.
But we do generate a certain percentage, right?
A percentage of their profit.
Of the profit, okay. That's great. You answered the next question that I had about marijuana.
Oh.
But since seventy percent of the lodging tax is dedicated to tourism within the town, do you have any ideas about how the other thirty percent should be allocated?
Well, I know things like, I'm sure Jessica at the Chamber of Congress would know more than I do where that should go. I know that the, the fairgrounds apply for some, I believe, didn't they, Sandra?
Well, the seventy percent goes for tourism. They have to meet certain requirements in order when they apply. The thirty percent also goes into a general fund.
Okay.
And we can use it for other, anything.
Other thing, yeah. They have to apply.
They have, if they want the money for tourism, they have to apply and there's, it's pretty strict application and they have to give us reports at the end.
I know they also apply for, for some, too.
Thank you all. Now, I want to move to a category of ordinances and so forth. Sandy, have you thoroughly read the charter and the ordinances for the town of Lakeview? And if so, do you feel that some sections should be revised, updated, and/or expanded?
Well, let's take them one thing at a time.
Okay.
The charter was one thing you said.
Have you, have you read the charter?
I've read the charter many times, yes. And it was voted on the last time in 2010, which took effect in 2011, at which time it was revised at that point. And I've seen one or two minor things, but the charter has to be done by vote. It cannot be just changed by the council.
Okay. And, and the ordinances, have you read all those?
Are you kidding? There's hundreds of ordinances there. And some are old, some are new. I have read the ones that I'm interested in. I've read a number, a lot of them, yes.
Okay. Have you had time to read any of that, Jay?
That's gonna be on my agenda.
That's true.
To read those.
You can go back to like nineteen thirty something.
Yeah, I know some of them are pretty good. They're still on the books, yeah.
What is your opinion of the enforcement of ordinances or lack of enforcement?
Well, some, I think there are some that need more enforcement and others that are done well. All ordinance are not something that's enforced. It's just town law. But, you know, one of the bigger ones that I would like to see more action is, of course, in cleaning up and having someone that we can hire who is trained to follow the rules and, you know, give people their warnings. And it's, it's a process. It is not just, you can dwell-
Well, the next question was going to be, should the town maybe think about employing a code enforcement officer?
You mean for housing and for cleanup, etc.? Yes, we've talked about that so many times. The problem, of course, is financing it. And I would still like to see us do that in the future.
Jay, what's your opinion of enforcement of ordinances or lack of?
Well, I think we have enough ordinances. We just need to enforce them. That's what everybody says. That's, that's an easy one. I think some of the, the places that people in Lakeview say this has to be cleaned up and this has to be cleaned up, I don't really think they're in Lakeview city limits. So you would have a hard time enforcing that on the get-go. So unless they're annexed in, you know, and maybe they don't want to annex. So, anyway.
And do you think that the town should employ a code enforcement officer?
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't think it would hurt or we're hiring new police officers. Maybe they could take a couple hours of their day to, to do that. I mean, I don't know. I really have to sit down and get with everybody to, to get a general feeling for that.
Thank you. Animal control, such as dogs, deer, skunks, as a result of people feeding the feral cats and everything outside your houses, it's a huge problem. The deer population was discussed by the town council, but no action was taken. The problem still exists. What should be done about the deer population and its threat to humans and domestic animals?
Well, I think we had huge discussions on that a year or two ago and found out that it was very difficult to do things. We do, we do have a law that you cannot feed deer. And that has been, you know, it's, it's still on the books. I don't know that we've gotten any complaints about it, but it is very difficult because of all of the state laws concerning the animals. And I, I would like to see more, more things we could do, but I don't know if we, I don't know the answer to that. I do not know the answer.
But we have to keep pondering it, right? And Jay, how do you feel about that animal control?
Well, the first, one of the first meetings I went to is when they were discussing the deer population. And, and when, when it was being done, I said, raised my hand and I said, Sandy, why don't you call Burns? I bet they got the same problem. She says, we have. So, I mean, I think everybody's exploring everything. That's just a real tough situation. I know that John Day, they collected, I talked to Craig Foster, who's knows a lot about deer, and they collected, I don't know, thirty or forty deer in this big pen and one, and they were going to take them out, put them someplace else and, and one of the community people broke into that and let them all out. So you have about half the community that loves the deer and everything. And then you got another part of the community that they want to shoot them, you know, they just want to get rid of them, so.
Sandy, the town council has been placing ads in the local paper urging people to clean up their properties. In years past, there was an ordinance on keeping up property and a penalty of noncompliance. Is this ordinance still in effect? And if not, would you support a new ordinance?
Yes, it is still in effect and it is one that we were talking about earlier that we do not have the code enforcer. We do, if people make a complaint, we do have a process of notifying them and asking them to clean up. And I, a number of them have, but it does not work with everyone until we get someone who is kind of a quasi sheriff's deputy, at least with some authority to do that.
Thank you.
And issue citations if they do not comply.
Jay, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I would, I would really like to see a spot in Lakeview where you could take biodegradable materials, leaves, branches and all that stuff, and put it somewhere for free. I don't, I think there would be several spots around for that. And also, like Ben has two weeks of free dump sites and advertise that in the paper instead of one day. And maybe we could get some more people to do some cleanup.
Thank you. Sidewalks in Lakeview need to be repaired or replaced. Is there an ordinance to take care of this? And if not, how would you address the problem?
Homeowners and property owners are responsible for their sidewalks. We are responsible for those that are on town property. And so I can't say that we can repair sidewalks. I know many years ago, we had a grant that allowed people to repair their sidewalks and they paid small amounts back every year until the grant was paid. But, you know, that ran out a long time ago. It's never been replaced. And so I don't know that there is any way we can enforce that.
Right. Now, Jay, do you have anything to add to that?
Kevin asked me that question when we were talking about the, for the newspaper. And I said, yeah, anything over a quarter of an inch deviation in the, in the sidewalk you could replace. I know that I have, used to have several rentals and one of the rentals was down by the school. And I actually put in, I think it was around fifteen hundred dollars worth of new concrete around it. And I just think, you just have to have more pride of ownership in, in Lakeview and want to keep your properties up. And, you know, it's kind of up to people to do that.
Right. Lakeview has many buildings which are empty and not being maintained. Squatters are occupying these buildings and further contributing to their deterioration. So how would you suggest the town deal with this? Jay?
Well, that's a tough one. When I was taking care of the parks for a couple years, I would go up behind a swimming pool and there would be people up there with little campfires going and their tents up. And I would call the police and they would come in and clean them out. It's unfortunate. We're not the only city that has that problem. I know if you go to downtown Reno, you will see what has happened there. And they just made a commitment to take the community center and make that into a shelter for people. So I, I think we can work towards that to have, I don't know, there's not a whole lot of squatters here. But I think we could work more with the food bank. There used to be the, oh, the church.
The ministerial-
Yeah, the ministerial association used to get involved. I know the KC, we've sponsored a lot of families and given money to, to get themselves on their feet, so.
Right. Sandy, how would you suggest the town deal with this? Because there are squatters that are occupying these buildings and further contributing to their deterioration. So what can be done?
Well, I think Jay had some good ideas there and I don't, can't think of too much else because the property owners also need to be responsible for their properties and to make sure that these things aren't happening there instead of letting, letting them go until people can just move in and do what they want.
Do you think absentee landlords are contributing to the problem?
Possibly, yes. I'm sure somewhere absentee landlord, yes.
Do you think that absentee landlords are contributing to the problem?
Yeah, I think so. I've, I've always been lucky to have, to have good renters, you know, schoolteachers and things like that. And that's, that's always been a positive for me. So, but I screen people pretty well and, but I've noticed that there's people that don't, so.
Sandy, to your knowledge, are homeless and or displaced persons being relocated to Lakeview? And what do you see as the town's responsibility for dealing with this issue?
I don't know if that is accurate or not. I have, I really do not have any information to say that it is or that isn't. I, I do not know.
Okay. Jay?
Well, I think that's, that's going on all over the United States right now. More and more people are losing their jobs and it's getting tougher. And I think people move to Lakeview. I don't know a lot of people now that I, fifteen or twenty years ago, I could walk around Lakeview and know everybody and now I don't. So I think there's a certain amount of people that are moving in to, you know, share some food stamps and, and those kind of things. Because it's easy to get here, I think.
Sandy, the agreement between the town and county regarding law enforcement has a date line for rediscussion. Do you, do you know what that date line is? And what is your opinion about the current arrangement?
You know, I, I don't remember what the date line is. I think it can be reviewed at various points, but I hope it is working well. And I think if people do not feel like it is, they need to come in and talk to us at the town and let us know what your problem is with law enforcement. Because we, we do want it to work if we can. Or, of course, we always would have liked to get our own police department back, but I don't know when that will happen. But I think that if someone is dissatisfied, please come in and talk to the town manager.
Thank you. And you answered the next question I have. Do you think that Lakeview should have its own police department back?
It depends on finances, employees, and a lot of things to consider. Yeah, I, I would like that, but yeah.
Thank you. Jay, the agreement between the town and the county regarding law enforcement does have a date line. And, but what is your opinion about how it's working now? And then do you think that Lakeview should have its own police department back?
Yeah, I agree with Sandy on that. I think it worked, if you have the qualified people here, can pay them enough to get, to get them here. That's, that's the issue, I think, you know, to get qualified people here. Yeah, so.
Thank you. I want to move into the area of ethical behavior. Jay, are you aware if the town of Lakeview has a code of ethics or guidelines for ethical behavior?
Well, I'm sure they do. I, I, I would bet a hundred percent that they have an ethical, I think it's a state law. You have to have an ethical policy right now. So I haven't read it, but I'm sure it's there.
Okay. Sandy, a few years ago, there, there was a posting on the website regarding ethical behavior of town officials. It seems to have disappeared off of that site, website. Does the town of Lakeview have a code of ethics or guidelines for ethical behavior?
Yes, I believe they do. I, I think that there's some things on ethics in their town charter also.
And where can you find a code of ethics?
Well, you'd have to come into town hall and ask for it.
And then, have you read it?
I have not.
Okay. From outside of what's in the town charter. Right. So how would or should the council enforce a code of ethics? Does the council just police itself?
You mean, police other council members?
Uh huh.
Well, yes. I think complaints need to be made to the mayor or the town manager if people have complaints. And then, you know, we would have to meet an executive session to discuss those problems.
As a town council member, what are your thoughts about using your cell phone while a public meeting is in session? I don't think it's appropriate. Okay. What do you think about that? Jay, as a town council member, what, what are your thoughts about using your cell phone when a public meeting is in session?
I think if you use your cell phone in a public meeting, that that's public, you can use that for public knowledge. It can be put down in paper. So everybody could see it. That's a transparent issue. I, I don't think you're supposed to do that. I mean, as far as putting things on Facebook, I think that should, I don't think council people should put things on Facebook either.
Is there a council policy that addresses the use of cell phones during official meetings?
No, I don't believe there is, but it's probably a good idea.
Okay.
I mean, the mayor always asks people to shut their phones off or silence them during a meeting. And, and that, he says that at every meeting.
Sandy says there's not a council policy that, that addresses the use of cell phones during the official meetings. But if not, should there be?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think they should use cell phones.
Okay. And, and you started to address the next question. How should a well-functioning town council use social media?
To be transparent, I think if, if they're gonna make decisions on some things, they could, they could post those in the newspapers. I, I don't think they should post them on Facebook to keep everybody informed. But I think it should be, it should be a personal agenda for anybody. It should be for the common good of our community. Those kind of things.
Okay. Sandy, the same thing. How should a well-functioning town council use social media?
Well, we, the town does have a, currently have a Facebook page. We also have a website with quite a bit of information on it. We do put things in the paper when there are special announcements. The paper's been very good to us. And other than that, I think citizens also have a responsibility to check in and the agenda is posted. And any special meetings, people need to pay more, a little more attention to things when the meetings are going on.
Now, this next one is a fairly sensitive question. Several town council members have been reported as saying that they had official OSHA notification of persons who were alleged to have turned over, who to have turned Howard's drugs in. And that they publicly shared that list. As a town council member, did you ever say that you had that list? And did you share the names of people supposedly listed in that notification?
I not only did not share that or have a list, I was accused of being one of the people that turned Howard's in. I personally called OSHA and asked them about their confidentiality policy. And they said that they did not release that information because the file was still open. And also whoever did make the report could ask that it be confidential and it was not released. And it was not, it would not be released.
Thank you so much. Jay, have you done any repairs or remodeling at your home recently? Or have you had a contractor work for you? People are often confused when doing remodeling. And so, can you explain when a permit is required? Or do you go to the town or the county planning department? And have you done any of that remodeling?
Yeah, I've done a ton of it. Since I've retired from school, I remodeled five or six houses. And I, my personal joy in that, because I get to do it. I always go up to Darwin Johnson's place. I never get to talk to Darwin. He's back in the back room. But I talk to the secretary and I've learned what I have to have permits for. And I always get an electrical permit and a plumbing permit. And I work hand in hand with the permit gentleman that comes to the house. He'll stop in every, well, every couple of weeks. I find that it's easy to have them involved before I get into a project and have to redo it and do it the right way the first time. So, yeah, I get permits for everything.
And so, you're saying that when remodeling, you have followed these procedures?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sandy, the same question. Have you done any remodeling or?
Well, not for the last fifteen years or so.
Yes. Well, people are often confused about...
We did, we did get, well, actually, our contractor got the permit for us. But we did get it to the county. The town has a planning department, but that's for new homes and...
Okay. And you follow the procedures of getting the proper permits and everything?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, let's move into some citizens' concerns. Sandy, would you, are you in favor of maybe territory annexation within the urban growth boundary? And if so, what territory?
Well, I'm in favor of annexing when people request that they want to be annexed. And we have annexed certain things primarily for people who are like Red Rock because they wanted to have city water and sewer. And the new extension going north because the businesses out there want city water and sewer also. And so, they have requested that they be annexed.
Okay. And Jay, are you in favor of territory annexation within the urban growth boundary? And if so, what territory might be included?
Yeah, I would really have to be on the council to make those decisions. But I know, like Red Rock, putting twenty-five million dollars into our community, they must have some faith there that it's, that it's gonna be a positive experience for all of us. Or they wouldn't have come in and dumped that money here. So, anyway, yeah, I think those kind of annexations are wonderful.
Well, with housing so scarce, Sandy, are you willing to consider more multi-housing developments in Lakeview? And do you think the town should consider perhaps exploring public-private partnerships?
Well, I would have to explore that a little bit more and find out more information about what it all means. But we definitely need more housing. And I'm certainly not opposed to more housing being built, even multi-apartments types of things. Or, you know, I think that, that would be a benefit to our community.
Thanks. Same question, Jay. With the housing so scarce, are you willing to consider more multi-housing developments in Lakeview?
I think multifamily duplexes and triplexes would be wonderful. I'm not so sure that Lakeview has to, that a community of Lakeview has to sponsor that. I mean, I don't think it's up to them really to do that. I think it's maybe more of an ownership that, you know, you can give rewards to that.
Well, the follow-up on that was, do you think the town should perhaps consider exploring public-private partnerships?
Yeah, I don't see how that would work very well here. But I mean, that's, that's just me personally. If everybody wanted to do that, that, I guess, you know, I would think about it. I just think that's more of a private enterprise to do that.
Jay, have you been involved in any of the planning commission, town council, or public meetings? And do you have any thoughts to share?
On the...
Like, planning, the planning commission?
The planning commission.
Have you gone to those or been involved?
I haven't went to planning commissions. I know that they're pretty strict in letting people do things, you know? So, but, yeah.
What about public meetings?
I agree with public meetings. I just think it should be real transparent here, so.
Thank you. Sandy, Lakeview lockers closed down. The owners wanted to redevelop the property, which was zoned commercial. The owners filed a request for rezoning to a multifamily dwelling. Now, several neighbors objected, and the request went through several hearings. But during this process, the town's legal counsel advised the council that there was no legal basis for denying the request. Also, the developer's lawyer stated that the property owners would sue the town if the law were not followed. According to official records, all of the members of the planning committee and the town council voted unanimously in favor of the zoning change at the first meeting. In subsequent meetings, the planning commission voted against the zoning change while the town council voted for it. Being aware of the financial consequences if the rezoning were not approved, how did you vote and what was your rationale for your vote?
Okay. Well, the first meeting were what everyone voted for. There were some people who objected to it because they said they did not get adequate notification. So, that was the reason that the second meetings were held. And it was only a zoning change. And we were not really threatened by McGarvus. We were threatened by the federal and state laws concerning homing, housing for handicap and mental illness. Those were the people who were. And we had a stack of letters from various agencies throughout the state that stated so. I did vote at the last public meeting to pass the zoning change.
And now, changing has just a little bit. What has been your involvement in trying to retain the Warner Creek prison in our community? Have you had any involvement in that?